Call the meeting to order. So the first thing on the agenda is, is anyone calling in remotely? That's not the first thing on the agenda.
Not passing anyone.
Okay. Okay. So, through previous minutes, does everyone have a chance to read the previous? Perfect grammatically correct note by Boe. I'm not saying that in hindrance.
Rue was written.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Tom? Paul?
Hi.
Yes? Chair is fine and Margaret is not here. Treasure's report, is there any treasure's report?
There's a, just a $666 charge for some USPS. Substitch, that Grace, you can, we have to vote on that or?
No, I don't think, we don't have to vote on the treasures. No. Put away sign it just up here. Okay, plan or support?
A portion of my report, I circulated that for the last meeting. Because we didn't, we didn't get to it, so I'm just gonna read over some of those things that were on that report. The ZBA voiced support in relaxing accessory apartment requirements to allow for some form of accessory apartment as by right. No language has been developed for anything like that, it's just an initial discussion that I had with the ZPA because they basically turned into the accessory apartment approving board. It's mostly all, it's probably like 90% of the applications they're getting, at least within the last two years. So, looking at that, they were supportive of looking into that to maybe relax it a bit, but again, no, we haven't, we didn't discuss really specifics about what that might look like. Just a general discussion about that and talking about, obviously, we just had the housing production plan done and there was mention of expanding that use within that document. And so it would be a good timing to just have that discussion. Obviously, nothing's, nothing's gonna be on the warrant for this town meeting. Maybe next, maybe spring, maybe not, but we're gonna start thinking about it and I'll probably bring it up to them again if they want to be the ones that carry forward to the planning. Because obviously that's the, it would be a bylaw change that would have to come through here.
Question on that, did they express any interest in changing? Like right now it's restricted to in-law apartments, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Did they express any interest in expanding that out or was it just a really preliminary?
It was very preliminary, I forget if we touched on that specifically, but I know I've had conversations with other folks about that and there seems to be an appetite to relax that as well and to not have it limited so specifically to family members and things like that.
Okay. Just, folks, I don't know if anyone seen this, but you go up 140, someone just put a double Y in their front lawn, so.
I think gone, like.
Yeah. Yeah, it's wrapped and it's all right, you know, long, it's on the other side.
Is that, oh, well notice that house, that house got, had a fire.
Okay, so it's a temporary?
Yeah, that's temporary, but they re-destruct inside.
I know the one you're talking.
Okay, I thought it looked like, I thought the house looked fun.
Yeah, it's a double Y, looks a pro.
But again, I watched the road when I.
Yeah, no, I saw the, I saw the fire trucks outside that one.
So we just gotta make sure when we do this that that doesn't happen anymore.
Of course.
So, okay.
The Office of Housing Livable Communities amended regulations governing the MBTA communities to allow for mixed use for bottom floor commercial within proposed districts. This can potentially offset the housing requirement, but I mean, I think further clarification is really needed from the state on how this is gonna be applied. They, they, I mean, just like I said, they amended it because they got a lot of feedback from towns saying, yeah, you know, we're working on, we'd like to provide for this, but you know, it makes maybe more sense for us to have in our, in a village or downtown district, but we don't wanna occupy business zones, real estate and lose out on, on expanding tax base and maybe business zones by dedicating it solely to residential. And obviously the concern would be that by intrusing residentially then, and you know, there's a, there's a tax liability with providing services. So they, you know, we'd rather have some sort of ability to incorporate mixed use. So it sounds like the state took that to heart and is allowing more commercial on the bottom floor of the district regulations that are created, so. It can potentially offset it to a certain, certain percentage of what's required. It can offset the actual unit requirements. So, we'll, we'll be looking at that further, obviously.
So that would help if we did the downtown area, that would help with the town-owned properties down.
Yeah. Spoke with a resident with concerns about, well, not the double Ys, shipping containers used as sheds, per code enforcement, we can't regulate this, what's in the Sonic Enabling Act, which is, we can't regulate building materials. And sheds being things that are, you know, it's the lowest threshold of construction that, that needs to happen for any sort of residential use on, it's not, it's a residential accessory use. You know, the sheds just need to be anchored down so they don't fly away in a hurricane. That's, that's really the building code test that.
And square footage, anything over square footage.
Yeah. Anything over a certain square footage needs to adhere to setbacks.
Eighty?
Eighty?
I think it's eighty.
I think it's 120 square feet.
Just 10 by 12, I thought it was 10 by.
I think it's 10 by 12. So, you know, concerns about that, so if you're using like a shipping container for in your backyard as a shed, it's not the best, and I think a lot of people's opinion, not the best use, so.
Was she speaking?
Appreciate is probably what they're thinking.
Yeah, that's.
Was there any, were they speaking to prevent it or were they speaking because there was one? Because they wanted to go away?
To go away. But obviously any new bylaw would not address existing things, but it, it, it would, you know, for consideration by this board, you wanna look at making additional bylaw amendments to maybe explicitly prohibit such use.
Those are things on backtrace, right?
Well, again, if they're over, if they're under certain size, they're probably gonna be made at a box, which is probably a lot cheaper than a, or less.
Even a many ones like 10 by 20.
Yeah, I thought the shipping container is huge.
So those, those require a building permit, you put one of those on your pub, anything over 10 by 12.
That's what I'm wondering, does hers fit the definition of a shed?
I bet you if it's under that, it's better constructed than a, than a box.
No, they, no, they are.
The limitation is that, I don't believe we have a definition of shed and the definition of it, you know, I'm sure we define accessory use and accessory structures, but we don't define. We can't regulate what they're made of, but we can, we can potentially prohibit that sort of use being allowed to be placed on a residential lot for any sort of.
But if someone's using a shipping container to, it's gonna exceed the, it's gonna require a building permit.
Sure, you get a building permit.
You can.
Yeah. That's the issue, so you can get a building permit because building code is not gonna regulate what, it's gonna look at the fact that it needs to be maybe placed within setbacks and it's gonna look at the fact that it's, isn't gonna blow away in a hurricane that's anchored down. Because again, if it's being used as shed, as long while we're in it.
Like a shipping container is gonna blow away?
No. Not the most sturdy.
But I don't, I don't suppose you can do anything about aesthetics.
No, I mean, you can, they wrap it with the siding so that it doesn't look like a shipping container.
We went through this one, the Roy guy. Where did he park a half track in the front? And he got, what was wrong with that, but he was, he parked, he did so because just to prove that you can't, I can park anything I want as long as legal and to meet setbacks and it's, if it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
I paint my house pink.
Exactly, but I'm, you know, I'm almost positive that even though you can't regulate built-in materials, you can still regulate the fact that if you're storing that sort of material on the property.
But metal?
No, no, the, 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 a box, you know, a CSX.
Should make it a little health component in this, well, as part of building materials, you can't use hazards, but you know, the building.
Well, I know, but I'm just wondering if shipping containers, I mean, made out of metal.
Pressure.
Yes, it's like, I, yeah. I don't know.
We'll take a harder look at it for code enforcement, but it, you know, if the board wanted us to look at revising language or offering language to help strengthen a prohibition of that sort of thing, you know, let me know.
Yeah.
It may have to spend a few nights in that, I wouldn't touch it.
I have, I mean, I have no appetite for it at this time, but I don't, I mean, I.
When does it end? With what else? Boards?
I encountered someone put one in.
No striped houses.
I haven't seen them all over up and, and I don't think it is a.
Working in some more rural communities, I've seen people like farms use as storing hay, things like that, so it's, you know, there is, I won't say legitimate use of them. It's not necessarily what I mean, but there's proliferation of them because obviously it's, I'm sure it's a much cheaper alternative to whatever, whatever else people keep looking to use them, so.
For a while, right before COVID, the shipping container housing was all rage, right? Because it was very cheap building materials and they went up 10 times.
Yes.
And that rage died.
Sure, yeah.
Well, it can be nice, I mean, they found a really swanky restaurant in Nashville, it was three shipping containers.
What else are there?
Something like module houses, you can make it look good.
But, yeah. I spoke with the owner of 142 Walnut Street about potentially combining his land into the East Street Estates development. And so obviously that's not before the board right now, but, and I also spoke with him today about it and potentially evaluating other development potential on his land, which is approximately 13 acres. Which is just to the south, obviously, approaching Walnut Street to, to East Street Estates. So he's, he's trying to think creatively to squeeze out some work hiring from his property, access acres that can, I can sympathize with, and so, so anyway, just, just letting you know that that's, that's a potential down the line. I'm working with him and if he, I may, depending on how that conversation evolves, bring into the, this board if he has any something in mind definitively that he wants to explore and he can have a preliminary conversation here. And I think Grace wanted to talk about the website real quick.
Yeah, so a brief update. Her launch date has been pushed back a few times and so the staff is currently still working on it. One goal that staff has been discussing with the new website is providing consistency for all department and board pages. And in reviewing other board pages myself, I noticed that many boards and commissions have a mission statement listed on their website and the planning board does not. And so in reviewing other towns' planning board mission statements on their website, I drafted one, which is on the second page of that. Opened any suggestions speaking at?
We want us, the will of the board to have a brief discussion on this now and then look at it and talk about it more in the next meeting. We have a number of people here today, so I don't wanna get into a deep dive on this right now. What do folks think?
Just put it in, put down Grace wrote it, see her, it's any problem.
Everyone does that anyway. Her and Jessica, you know, it's like.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, it's fine, it's a list of our, you said, that's.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, it was very vanilla, I didn't see.
There's a, you could put in the Massachusetts law that tells what we have to follow, like in each, I think it's section 81.
Did you get that, first sentence, first line, first sentence?
All right, we're near the, section, Jeffrey Frum, section 81A. The rules, aren't there other? Okay. Because that's really all you really need to have to say, because that's our elected law. What we also do is, like you said, master plan. Two thousand five. Okay? I am fine with it the way it is, as long as it has what we legally have to, what we're elected to do. I think, good thing is, you get a chance to just read through it once without.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple little comments, we can mark it up or we can email Grace in between meetings and you can play with it, but it looks good.
Sounds good doing Grace.
Yeah, well done.
And thank you for keeping our membership, the Boardable Housing Trust still has members from a long time ago, but the planning board is always up to me. Thank you. Thanks. Anything else, Mr. Plank?
No, that's the one I was saying, like mandated or required. Required, yeah, required, involve that. There may be more than one section. It talks about planning when its responsibilities, it might be more than just eight, I'll check it out.
Yeah, I mean, let's just think of it, mark it up and then.
Just follow, yes, follow the thinking.
It's very rare to correct.
Take advantage.
Okay. So, um, it is, what is it, it is 717, so let's suspend the regular meeting and open the public hearing on 108 Grove Street, large lot fronted reduction special permit, division two lots and two parcels, is this moving for you or?
Yes, I represent. Hi, please, and you'll be speaking for?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, and you are?
Paul Knappert.
Okay.
I'm in engineering and good evening, Madam Chairman of the board, it's a pleasure to be here for you. It's been a little while, I mentioned, I'm here on behalf of the landowner and the applicant, Linda Moore. And before I present the application to you, I want to be certain that I intend to some matters, which is to deliver the balance of the application fees, the green cards and, and the letters, so. Thank you, thanks. And, okay, the status up here, the board can see it, I have some.
Where's the others?
Some graphics.
Do you have the others listed, Matt, your second position?
Thank you.
Bill, great, great, thanks. Great, thanks.
You have them, okay, great. So you mentioned, this is an application for a large lot reduction, a large lot fronted reduction special permit, it's already to multiple, and it relates to property of 108 Grove Street in Upton. This, I have a series of plans that I hope will help to illustrate what, what this more would like to do. And this first plan is a plan that was prepared for her and recorded back in 2019. So this first plan illustrates what I call the status quo. The application relates to really two parcels, but she owns three of them. In yellow is a parcel that's owned by her individually and in orange, both the solid orange and the outlined parcel is land owned by her LLC, called Grove PV LLC. The two parcels in orange are separated, bisected by land owned by the Grant and Upton Railroad. So in order to create a, and by the way, the railroad also serves as a zoning district boundary between the agricultural residential zoning district and the commercial and industrial. So the second plan is the block for fronted reduction plan that we submitted that we're asking you to ultimately endorse. And what this shows is the proposal, how the land will be re-divided to create the large lot, frontage reduction lot and the conforming lot. So, the position of this parcel is that the, what was formerly the orange part owned by her entity will be divided into this solid pink parcel, we call parcel A1, about 18,000 square feet. And what remains of the orange parcel is what we call parcel A2, it's about 141,000. Then what was the, the yellow land, a land owned by her is now divided into this pink hatched parcel and this solid yellow parcel. The solid yellow parcel, which we call lot 1A, conforms to the minimum dimensional requirement requirements of the agricultural residential zoning district. It has a minimum frontage, 240 feet and a minimum area of 80,000 square feet. The pink hatched region, when combined with the solid pink region, will form the large lot frontage reduction lot. And it meets the technical requirements of your bylaw in that it has not less than the minimum frontage, a circle of 65 feet can pass through and it has three times the minimum area, which is 240,000 square feet. We are also required under your bylaw to illustrate that the property could be divided into two or more lots in a conventional subdivision.
Could you cite the question to the frontage, I thought it was 70 feet.
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was 55.
And, and there is 76 feet of frontage
Okay.
on Grove Street, yes. Thank you for asking that, I may not have mentioned that, I did mention that 65 foot circle. But the parcel will have 60 feet, 76.61 feet of frontage on Grove Street. So we're also required to demonstrate for you that the property could be divided in a conventional subdivision, and this plan, which we call a conceptual subdivision layout plan of land, illustrates that. What we show is a proposed roadway of 750 feet to the cul-de-sac meeting the subdivision rules and regulations as far as the diameter. And we show that the land could be divided into one, two, three, four lots, each of them conforming with the minimum dimensional requirements of the.
I mean, just major up to one. Sure, conservation disagrees with you, they say that that you could not get four lots in there. So I would, for the chair, you only need to convince me that you can get two lots.
Yes.
So four, so to me, if you can get two lots in there, that's subdivision. And so, but just keep that in mind.
What they're looking for is a large lot frontage.
So, subdivision, the definition of a subdivision is two or more lots. And if so, if you're trying to tell me that you can build four lots there, I don't know that you could after seeing the other reviews, just okay, but if you keep that in mind, you're putting only two.
I understand, thank you for mentioning that. There are wetlands present on the property and there has been some permitting on the property that was required because of the presence of those wetlands. So when we looked into that, it's a little unclear how or why you couldn't do this. We think you could. And the reason we think you could is because you can't cross a wetland, the Wetland Protection Act says you can't cross a wetland to gain access to a. Now, I think a question that might be raised by the Conservation Commission, I haven't seen their review, but I have talked to.
Perennial stream, they mentioned the.
Exactly, so the question seems to be whether or not this is a perennial stream or intermittent stream. And it's interesting because there are three permits, three orders of conditions that have been issued by the Conservation Commission, two, two of this more over the last 10, 15 years or so. Two of them related to work right here, next to the waterway, if you will. One of them for a house addition, one of them for a pool. And in neither of those order of conditions, did the Conservation Commission find that there was, that this was a river or a perennial stream. So, I'm not sure why it would be now, maybe it was then, but for what it's worth, the reporting with conditions don't seem to indicate that. So, we, we think that it's probably not, but even if it is, even under the Wetlands Protection Act, you, the riverfront regulations, we, we think you could cross that even if it was a river. But to your point, envision in your mind, if you will, taking this, this cul-de-sac and just sort of moving it down closer to Grove Street. I haven't prepared a plan to show that, but again, I think you can see in your mind, in your mind's eye that if you move this cul-de-sac here, you could easily create two lots. So, although there may be some quibbling over whether or not you could cross this wetland or river, or river, whichever it is, I, I do think it's clear that you could at least get two lots out of that.
Our rules don't, don't require you on a large lot frontage application to do a complete preliminary plan on a subdivision. It's just to show us that it is feasible to do that and create a 500 foot dead end road that the town has to take over and maintain. Doesn't add anything to the property values that surround it. And this, reducing the production, having that amount of land is a better, for the neighborhood, a better use for the neighborhood.
I think, I mean, I think that was, when I was talking to Michael earlier, you know, there is a question, the Upton Conservation Commission does, as I learn the hard way, does interpret riverfront to be waterways that feed into a river. So Warren Brook, for example, is considered riverfront property. And streams that feed into Warren Brook are considered riverfront property. So I think that, you know, that, but I also, when I was looking at it, it seems like, you know, I think one of the things that we like to see is that there is a benefit to the town of Upton to grant this. So we like to see a depiction of what could go there if we did not approve this. And even if one lot, which I questioned, was doable, it seemed that you had three. It seems the Conservation Commission's letter questioned whether or not you could do it, it didn't say you couldn't do it. You know, because it wasn't the, it was, you know, you, you don't have to do a preliminary plan if you did not, I mean, to find a plan and you did not, which is fine, so, you know, again, I think that, you know, three lots is, shows that, you know, you're doing two where you could do at least two or probably three, you know.
Conservation is on our decision, but it's only that you have to meet their order of conditions. We don't put their order of conditions on our approval of the pilot. That's, that's ours, we just simply put that and what else, other boards have to approve as well.
Understood, well, yes, I, I thank you and I agree with both of you that even though we could maybe quibble about how many lots, I'd like to think that we can all agree that at least the property could at least yield two with some roadway. And if we come back to the intent of the, the bylaw to eliminate roadways presumably, I think.
So you said if you could move the, you could move the, the roadway and, and certainly get two. So where would, how would you move the roadway to get two? And to, you know, not impact the, the stream crossing?
Right, well, the cul-de-sac need not be 750 feet. So if you imagine a shortening of it such that the, the ball was here rather than here and the frontage, the house could be here and a house here and, you know, a lot line.
Oh, you're just trying to get lot one now.
Yeah, so if you, if, if you, if you had a cul-de-sac like that, I think that's a, a division, lot one and lot two, something like that, that's pretty clear.
The 240 on the lot would change from the main street to the newly constructed roadway. Would cost these, I think it's 240 a road, that's the case, you're part of the.
Because that would only be if you put in the subdivision, what you're talking about, you should have one driveway to the side and one driveway along
Yeah.
the whole dark road leading into the cemetery, right?
Right. Yeah, the problem is, in order to get more conventional lots than one, you need to create frontage, so we'd need to have.
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't know if you could, you, you think you could slide it all the way on the left side of the string?
Yes, you'd probably edge it over this way a bit to more center it in that case. So, in any event, we do think that this is preferable for all the reasons set forth in your bylaw and the standard, as you know, for the grant of the special. And the standard, as you know, for the grant of the special permit is that the adverse effects of the use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the property, and that the proposal satisfies each of the criteria for the grant of a permit, of which there are six. For the reasons set forth in our letter, we do think it does satisfy those criteria and respectfully ask that you grant the special permit and endorse the plan.
Another question, that orange, the one that's outlined in orange, what is, do you, do you own that? You, you own, you have control over, okay. And that is just going to be landlocked? Is that going to be combined with the bigger lot? You know, is it going to stay here?
It's going to stay as is. It's currently paintball field back here. It's probably fire paintball.
Oh, it's a paintball field.
Yeah, so that will stay as.
Okay.
Now, by, by doing this, are we going to create any problems, landlocking any lots? Are we going to be a?
No, all, so as, you know, the status quo is this, this is already landlocked, if you will. Although there is some right of access. So, all we're really doing is nibbling a piece of this orange lot, that being this.
But if we, if, when we sign the new plan, this would be the recorded new plan, correct?
Correct.
And that, that doesn't show any way that you can cross a railroad to get to that back piece.
This plan does not show anything proposed regarding the parcel outlined in yellow, be it access or otherwise. Whatever means of access there currently is to this parcel.
Can you tell me what it currently is? Can you tell me how that, that parcel's currently accessed?
It's pedestrian passing.
Across the road.
Yes.
But that's irrelevant to this proposal, right?
Once we sign off this plan, this is the new plan, and what is it? We have no access to a lot. I'm supposed to landlock it.
But it's, it's not, it's currently, it's not changing anything that's existing.
Where's the lower park?
You don't understand.
Where you walk up front. Where's the lower, so lower parking lot, you know, most of the cars parked.
Right, there. And then the pedestrian.
I'm supposed to landlock.
Yeah.
But.
There is an access to. So, Tommy, I was just asking whether, now we can come in and depart, the paintball right here. So, they don't have, they don't have particular access right now into the lot through the yellow. You stop there and you walk across.
Yeah, there is practical access, I'm sorry, actual access along Old Millville Lane. So, there is a travel way, as you can see on the plan, that leads to a driveway onto the parcel in orange. So, I don't think we're creating any landlocked parcel because all we're doing is taking a sliver of this orange parcel.
Has the railroad given permission to cross?
So, once, if we were to approve the plan in a large lot, it, it, the bylaw provides that no further subdivision can occur on the lot. So, you, you want us to look at just this yellow now as the, as the, as the large lot? So.
Well, we're not affecting this at all, the, the orange outline.
And we're going to have just this new orange piece? That can be affected by the no further subdivision rule?
I mean, I'd be prepared to advise Ms. Moore that, that's, it doesn't meaningfully reduce the value of that orange piece, that it be limited to further subdivision. And the reason is because, you know, once, the idea was once the large lot, frontage reduction lot and the yellow lot are created, if you look at it practically, what's left to subdivide? There's not much development potential there.
You could, you could go to the registry tomorrow, record that, that, that pink D right there and sliver that over, and then come back to us with, you know, that, what you're only affecting was on her, you know, you, you could come back into us another day and show us just this, and you're just subdividing that.
Why not? Not really, because in order to create a deed, we need a plan that.
But you could, orange, you could just give the pink to lot 1B.
You could describe it by meets and bounds, but the registry isn't supposed to do that unless there's a plan.
I, I don't think I'm thinking myself, but I'm sorry. I mean, you could do this in two steps. You could, you could come in and, and move the lot line around and then come back to us another meeting and say, now I've got this newly created lot. And I want to do the large lot, so just seeing two spots.
Is the, on the right, is that part of the large lot frontage?
No, no.
On the right, meaning this?
Yeah, paintball, yeah.
No, it has no frontage on, on a, on a public.
When you, when you record it, are you going to report just the left side of the railroad or the right side, or both?
Well, this plan, as you see it, would be recorded. So, it would show the re-division of this, and we would show that just sort of for informational purposes, I suppose. Then there would be a deed that would give parcel A1 to Ms. Moore, thereby creating the large lot frontage.
My, my viewpoint on that is it's two different processes. You've got a large lot frontage, that's all I want to see is what you're cutting off the large lot. If you've got another plan on that, then that's going to be another Form A, right, as a parcel. So, you've got a Form A application and a, a large lot on the same plan, and I want those broken up. Any other?
I just have a question. Is, and I, and I guess it could complicate because you, you did the orange around it. Is that, is the orange and the orange outline and the orange built-in, is that on the same deed? Is that both owned by the LLC?
Yeah.
Yes, but it's, it's two.
Two parcels. Yes, the deed describes it as, as parcel one and parcel two.
I understand what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to eliminate my problem of access to that parcel. Only building on the left side of that for the, the application, the large lot frontage, the amount of acreage you put in it and all of the land you're using it, is the left side of the railroad. Then that's all I want, that's all I want to see on the plan.
Except, you know, these are common old right now. It's all, you know, spiraled to the orange.
And it's part of the plan.
It's got to be part of the plan, I think. Because, because we want to see what they're taking.
Right, and includes the acreage, and includes that it can't be further developed. That's what I'm trying to avoid here, right?
I know, you are.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're suggesting that your preference is that this plan be revised to simply delete whatsoever to the east of the railroad. That's, that's not a difficult thing for us to do. And we're going to accommodate that.
Here's the reason I, I say that we have a, a rule that says you can't further subdivide once it's in there. If you include that in your application for the large lot frontage, you're going to, you're not going to be able to further develop. If you, if you vote, you've got an extra chance.
Yeah, and I don't know that you ever could.
Yeah. It would be a challenge, but you could, who knows?
It may be done another way.
Once Milford Street Group 140 Realty Trust decides you're going to let it. I, I just, I, I think I'm okay with the left side of the plan, and that's why I was asking. You know, you could come in and do this in two steps and, and, and change everything so that you were coming in with, you know, you would slide, you would, you would sell this off and then come back to us two weeks later, transfer it. Then come back to us with just a plan that showed, hey, I've got this lot 1A and lot 1B. We want to do a large lot. Or we, you know, we'll get this, this.
You could do it. I mean, I hope there's some risk. That you wouldn't grant the special permit, and we'd have to undo that.
Right, and I'm trying to, I, I'm trying to actually avoid you blocking up property more than you have to. Because if we say everything that's on this page is, can no longer be, you know, can no longer be developed, other than what you're doing up there, it's, it's a little bit more limiting than.
Okay, well, I appreciate that from both of you. I would say, I guess as a general matter, that when it comes to development potential, this parcel has more, largely more than this. Although, I wonder if you could simply issue the permit and simply state that, you know, the large lot frontage reduction lot, meaning parcel A1 and lot B and lot 1A can't be further subdivided. If you limit the restriction on subdivision to that, then you're perhaps accomplishing what you're trying to accomplish.
But wasn't the public benefit, part of the public benefit was to, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with you just not considering everything on the right side of the tracks, just looking at the left side of tracks. And I kind of like the idea, because if you're looking at, you know, where it is next to the old cemetery and stuff, of leaving that, you know, prohibiting subdivision on that, you know, when the, you know, that is something I like. You know, if you guys are talking about, you know, blocking everything in orange together so it all can be subdivided together, you know, I'm not as enthusiastic about it. But I do have a question. You said the parking for the paintball was where you have that.
In the orange.
Yes. So, is that going to be a viable lot with the parking on it? It's not. So, that was my question. It's, it's, you know, it can't be considered as a lot if it's going to be a parking lot for paintball. I understand that, again, this is just conceptual, so you're showing the public benefit. But if part of the public benefit isn't a real lot, then unless you're going to put the lot, the hub somewhere else, and leaves a parking lot there, I'm not quite sure how that would work.
Yeah, because it don't have frontage on that. Orange doesn't have, none of it has frontage.
Correct.
That's correct. But then, you know, during, in the conceptual that they gave, the cul-de-sac would give it, you know, because if there was a river. So, that would have given it that. But, you know, again, I don't, I don't have a problem with all that being left in. And, you know, and with the large lot frontage, looking at the two lots, it's my understanding that the house that's already there.
Yes.
The rest of the, the other lots will be, that aren't being used, will be absorbed into that.
This, this might be a unique application before you because I assume that the vast majority of applications for large lot frontage reduction are creating a large lot so the house can be built. Whereas here, the large lot frontage reduction lot has a house on it already and the conforming lot.
I, I think I'd be okay with this and, and stating that none of the lands to the west, it's west of the railroad tracks can be further subdivided.
I'm comfortable with that.
Then you wouldn't have to screw around and transfer, you know, because they are in common ownership. We do, I, I think we do want to see the orange, you know, to know what, what's left over, like know what's being affected. I think we do want to see the orange outline.
But it's not part of.
Oh, we're trying to.
Yeah, and my thing is whatever you put in the large lot frontage for square footage is going to be locked in. Don't, don't shoot yourself in the foot, not be able to do anything that way.
Where are we putting what? Did you say?
Just the, the large lot frontage should be the minimum requirements, right? The square footage for your access for all sorts of things, you need to be minimum.
Yes.
Requirements. So, that's all you need, right? That's the, your.
Which is pink.
Pink.
Yes, pink is a large lot.
But as far as the, what's in orange, if it's not part of this application, it's not locked.
But it is, it is.
I would say west of the.
Yeah.
West of the railroad tracks.
It is part of the application. It's, it is.
Or, or it's all part of the application, but our limitation for the development should be all land west of the.
But if, there is a current path or a road that you could access in the future up to that two parking lot for the business.
Yeah, just can't be further.
Well, we say it can't be further subdivided in that. So, it can be, you know, the current use would be the current use, but it can't be, you know, because the owner, you, you operate the paintball. But, yeah, so it just, you know, but that's, that's not an issue before us anyways. Just the way I'm looking at the application that was written, and the way I'm looking at this presentation that I come in, I oftentimes am, is that what we're talking about is everything on, to the west of the railroad tracks is part of this application, and none of it, you know, if you get the approval for the large lot frontage, you will have the lot that's in yellow and the lot that, and everything else will be in the second lot. And including the orange building on would be in that second lot. That would all be absorbed in the second lot. And that all would be included in the no development, no further subdivision on that parcel.
So, they can't put another house on there, but they still can use it to access their property in prosegr.
Right, just keep it further subdivided.
Yeah, you can't further, I have no problem.
That, that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any, does the board, because there's, I don't know if you folks, if there's anyone there who want to talk about this, like, does the board have any other questions for the applicant or amongst themselves? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address this? Are you folks with? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're family, and the reason we want to subdivide is my family wants to build a house on the same.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Happening, the property.
You're not supposed to be doing that to us.
I don't feel me. Yeah, and I just want to say personally, I wish to say this at the end, I really appreciate you coming in, doing this stuff on green cards. It's not this easy. I like it when people come in with easels to put the maps up.
Kathy, looks like you might have some comments on them.
Oh, oh, someone, I'm sorry. It's on.
Yeah, are we, can we speak?
Yeah.
Scott Richardson and Nadia Sandberg, we're at 100 Grove Street, we're Linda's neighbors. And I think it was kind of hard to understand what initially was, was being asked for, but it looks like they're looking to develop a second lot on the property. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
And we have no objection to that whatsoever.
Okay.
And I just want to point out, there was talk about the stream, and it is an intermittent stream. Okay? Thanks.
Is there anyone else who has any comments? Is there, is the person? There's one other person, Charlie Utter, I think is.
Charles is listening on, has something else.
Okay.
No comment, no comment on this topic, thank you.
Okay.
I do have one comment. There is one neighbor, 107 Grove Street, that didn't, I cannot read entirely. But, you know, is any?
There are, send it to them, let's forget. There are more than that. Green cards have been returned for a stack. The green cards have, have not been returned for a few others, so.
I just have the one that has not been returned, but I have, it's the only one that I do not have.
If he has the receipts, we can, we should take those, we can verify that.
107 Grove?
Yeah, do you have the receipt for that?
Okay.
Yeah, check it out.
I'm happy to give you the receipt. Would you like that?
There you go.
Thank you. And Chair, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Before you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't know how rigid you are about people speaking at the public hearing. I just wanted to understand briefly the sort of mechanics. So, the plan has to be endorsed, I assume. I'm, I'm hoping that you'll vote favorably, and if you do, I assume we plot the bylaw and come back at your next meeting and it's endorsed. Does that, then we know how it works?
Well, probably wouldn't endorse till the twenty day period. You have twenty.
Okay, okay.
I agree with you, twenty, twenty-one days, I think.
Thank you.
So, there is a motion to close the public hearing?
Ten seconds.
Tommy?
Hi.
And?
Hi.
Kathy, I, Margaret is here. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the large lot frontage application as presented, with the condition that there will show be no further subdivision of any of the land west of the railroad tracks.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Tommy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
And Kathy is, hi, and Margaret is.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we're, we're, Michael probably will refer to decision for you.
Great.
And then, well, and then the board will look at it, and then it's, well, next two weeks.
Yes, with the chair. Yes, that's the process.
That is.
All right, folks. You're great, you're nice.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
I think we did the ballgame on tonight, we'll pick on.
Okay, so that was the last public hearing. So, a vote to approve the governor's landing decision. Do we need a motion to overturn the landing?
No, close, close.
I'll be closed if it's on that, governor. A vote to approve the governor's landing decision documents. A vote to approve the governor's landing decision documents. I looked it over. It could seem to reflect the conversations of the last. It still says draft.
No, 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 that's, this is the, he's, he said, I mean, that's what happened in the yellow highlighted.
I had only one comment, Jim Jefferson.
Yes.
On page seven. It was the agreed to accept the special condition, permit condition requiring it to connect the development. Well, that's, that was a condition, utilities, this layout design. That's, and to put in that it's going to, that we would agree to go down across country. I don't know that that needs to be specified. It just needs to be specified that for any major change to the design layout.
It was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we, he wanted to put it in just because he wanted to explicitly memorialize that he would be able to come back, and we did not have an objection.
Why not explicitly memorialize every other site plan major change, like you hit ledge, or you hit a, hit a this or, why, why just say the one? And the reason is because later on down the line, I just kind of look at this and say, hey, looks like you guys talked it up and you were okay with it back then.
That's why I put in that last line on the.
Yeah. But why even specify one specific site plan change? When it could be the road change, it could be design, it could be layout, it could be hit ledge, you got to reduce units, whatever. But why specify this? Why put it in writing that we are okay with that specific?
Well, I suppose my comment on that is because we had this discussion before, and he, it's Jeff on the call, okay. And Jeff, you know, pointed it out, and he, he asked, he basically said that they wanted to include that in there. And we, no, we asked those questions, and we had no objection to it. And so I think it's our hour to come back and say, well, we don't need it. It's without Jeff here.
This is the first time I've seen this in writing, and I'm looking at it in writing, and I don't agree that we specify a specific, is, why, why would we pick a specific site plan change, major change, and say, we agree that you can come back and change that?
I am not agreeing with that. I'm just wondering why that didn't come up before. I, I have a problem with stuff being dragged on longer than it needs to be dragged on. And if it was something new, you know, it would be different than if something was already discussed. And if I'm mistaken, and that wasn't explicitly requested by Mr. Rollup at previous meetings, then I withdraw my objections to hold it up.
He said he specifically, but it was only because he was nervous and it was a legal thing. He said, I'm doing this because I'm a little bit anal legally.
Right.
I need my decision to be part of it, legally, anal.
No, but we objected to it, but why didn't we object to it then?
This is the first time I've seen it in writing. I didn't see his, he said he wanted it. Fine, doesn't mean you get it. I see it now in writing, and I say, no. It's a general, yes, any major site plan review comes back to the planning board, and we review it. But to specifically say if you hit an Indian mound, or if you get a, you've got a sewer or anything changes, and put it in writing that we agreed to that, we're agreeing that the cross-country utility route is elevated beyond just a site plan. It's like we agreed to it, yes, we know. And legally, when you look at this months down the road, it's going to look like we were part of it.
No, I thought, I mean, my interpretation of it is that it's just redundant. It is what already is. It's not saying anything that isn't. You know, anybody has the right to go back.
And like that, why are we waiting?
I know, but because, you know, and that's the thing, to me, it's, it's a nothing.
I, I would, if my vote, I'm, I'm, this is wrong. I would rescind my vote to approve if that's in there, because it just makes us look like we're agreeing to go in cross-country when we said absolutely no. There was no vote to approve cross-country. It was actually the opposite.
I know.
But everybody said no on the cross-country. So he's putting it like we're still, if you read this, it looks like we're part of the deal. And that we said it was okay that you could come back. We said no, we said, you can come back for anything. You can always come back and hit.
Well, we didn't say no.
But we said no to the cross.
We said no to the cross-country, but we didn't say no to his request.
Does it say, does it say anything in there that we said no to a cross-country? Does it look like we're okay for things?
I mean, I think the, the first sentence, it doesn't explicitly say what you just stated. It doesn't, it doesn't say that the planning board said no to a cross-country route. But that first sentence, the applicant has agreed to accept a special permit condition requiring it to connect to, excuse me, requiring, connect its development to the town's planned water and sewer infrastructure within Milford.
Man, stuff is there, what do they mean? Would they agree to a special? We made a vote, this is what you do. These are the rules of what we agreed to as a vote. We didn't agree, go ahead, you know what I'm saying, on that one? There's no.
I, I completely agree with your concerns, Tom, and, but I'll, I'll, I think you're, you're right. I mean, we don't want to give them anything that they're not entitled to or that doesn't benefit the town. And I did get comfortable with it, with those kind of, those two bookends, right? At first, they've acknowledged, and we could have written it differently, right? They've agreed, they could say, they've acknowledged that our requirement is that they hook up to the town, town utilities. And at the end, I bookended it with, then we can, we can deny any modification until we haven't agreed to any special. So I agree with all your concerns. I just thought that that's how, that it was addressed sufficiently for me with those two chapters.
But why wouldn't your sentence be the only one needed? The board's right to approve or deny any modification is also reserved. Why, why do we need a specific thing that we would approve or deny?
I, I hear you. We would be litigating, we've already litigated with them for, my daughter is 24. So we're litigating with them for 23 years. So I, I can live with it.
I was less patient then.
You know, I, I think, I think that we heard the difference. I hear what you say, Tom, and again, it's, I, it isn't that I disagree with it. I just wish that the comments had come up early and we had worded it, if we worded it at all, we told them no, or we're not going to approve this, or if we worded, when to make the comfortable. That said, I would like to vote on whether our decision tonight on whether we're going to approve this, you sign it, knowing that you won't. Or if we're going to ask, which I would prefer not to happen, because I think that we have, you know, and this is not because I'm necessarily a booster of the project, because I'm not, but I think that they've sufficiently addressed everything we've talked about. So I, you know, if we want to drag this out another meeting, we can. But if we want to vote on granting the, what are we voting on? To approve the governor's landing decision document, I'm comfortable with that. In fact, I would like to entertain a motion that we vote to approve the governor's landing decision document. Do I have a second?
Yeah, you want to, I'll, I'll second with the discussion.
Okay.
Because.
Well, then, that's great, second, so let's take the vote. So motion is made to vote to approve the governor's landing decision document. So there will be a discussion afterwards. So Tommy?
Boy, if you have a discussion before the vote.
Oh, I thought we just voted for the, okay.
All right, see, right now, you got to know vote for me, because if this isn't, this is too specific, this is too forth the client, it doesn't help. Now, maybe you don't like beating dragon off, but I don't like doing the horn thing. And to do this this way, that says specifically, they can do a cross, that we're seeking approval of a proposed alternate cross-country route. There's no alternate proposed route in our decision. Our decision was one route down Main Street. There was no alternate cross-country route. We voted on it. We did not vote or approve any alternate cross-country route. And it's in here that we did something with it. We talked about it, we can talk about it again, he says he do. You know, the details would be reviewed during that lot of paging process. Why is that there? How does that help the town? It only helps him. There is no reason to have an alternate cross-country utility route in our decision. It wasn't in there, we didn't vote on it, and it shouldn't be in there. Nothing about an alternate anything. Alternate road design, alternate size of the houses, alternate what? It's just no reason for it.
All right, all right, just take our seven.
So we need to change the language. If I'm comfortable, the language change.
I'll vote.
Can you use mine? Your supermarket glasses. I can read it out loud if you want.
D.
I've got two cups of coffee.
No, really? Did you drive your, your motorbike?
So how about? Give me a minute?
Yeah.
Like a microwave.
So we can, many motion to reflect that this will be, it's a language, we're just going to have to go back.
What?
If Paul comes up with lawsuit.
Yeah.
When we vote to accept this.
Yes.
You already approved the special permit. You're, you're approving the document.
Okay, so we, so we basically pass on it if we don't vote to approve the document.
You have the, until the 30th to act on finalizing the document and having it sent to the court's office.
And we have another meeting.
Didn't you think it always, anybody, they could ask, even if we give you an applicant, gets turned down, they could come in and ask, when are you going to go at the next meeting? To produce it.
And, well, that's why I didn't think that it was a big deal when we discussed it before, was because you can do it anyway, but.
And the same thing goes the other way, we can approve.
Well, here's the problem, right? So here's, I'm going to, as I'm trying to wordsmith this, what they don't want to do is have to appeal our decision. That's what they don't want. So what they want to be able to do is if we don't get, we decide not to, you don't get the money going forward, right? Because partnerships in town do on 40 infrastructure as well, that they can come back and ask for approval. And we can say, well, yeah, they don't want to see people say, well, we already gave you approval. You can't ask for, you know, any, any changes, or they, they don't want to just ask for a new, they don't want to ask for a major modification. They want to challenge our condition then, and not appeal. That's the issue. So they're really, they're really delaying their appeal rights on that one issue.
That still didn't make sense, because from a legal perspective, they're saying that in the event that an applicant makes a special permit modification, say you approve a proposed alternative cross-country route, utility route. And then it goes, the details of which will be reviewed for the modification will involve a new public hearing, and then you're, so there's no sense in that. So it just makes no sense.
There's, there's also the, planning board doesn't have an amendment to a special permit process spelled out in any like rules and regulations. So I think they're also basically securing that process within that item. So the, back to basically what Paul said, they're securing their ability to, you know, say execution and appeal, right? So rather than challenging it now without knowing whether or not we're getting the funding for the sewer, they're securing an amendment process by coming to this board and altering that specific item through an amendment to a special permit, which essentially is just a new special permit that you open up a brand new public hearing for. But they said.
Let me, let me.
Proposed alternative.
Yeah, let me, let me give you, let me give you some, a little bit different language, a little bit stronger that you might get comfortable with. But that's, I, I forgot exactly what, it's not that they want to just have the right to come in and modify. They always have that right, yes. And we always have the right to say no. And that's, that's, we're covered there. What they want, what they might not have is the right to appeal our decision. That by forcing that overlay route on, they think it's an appealable issue now. And they don't want to fight, and we don't want to spend the money to fight that one issue now. So what if we modify the, the read? The special permit is conditioned on the development connecting to the town's planned water and sewer infrastructure within Milford Street, period. The applicant's right to challenge that condition and to pursue a modification of the special permit, blah, 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 early 2024, is reserved. In the event that they do that, then they can seek a modification, and we have the right. So we're going to say, the way you want it is, you have to do it. And that's what, that's what we're going to say with that language.
Right, because here's the word, I have a whole problem.
Yeah.
They said right here that approval of its proposed alternative.
Okay, so let's, let's take that out.
So we, we, so what? No, we said we denied your proposed alternative. So proposed in there says to me that they're thinking, they proposed it, and we didn't say no.
So we put a proposed, a, a alternative, an alternative.
Well, I'm not sure, I, what's, so I got you. What's better? Should we put, they can come back and challenge on the one that, well, I guess.
They can challenge anything. Any layout, design, utilities.
You want to take proposal. So you want to just read, and I think they'll be fine with this, because it's actually, it's less limiting to them in some ways. But I get it, you, we haven't reviewed that overland. We, it's never been engineered.
It says why.
The town's never signed off on that being a well.
But also, somebody's going to know from reading this is it was proposed to us.
So in, in the event that, yeah, in, in that event, you know, they don't get the 140, the applicant may pursue a special permit modification seeking approval of an, of an alternative, alternative utility.
I like that, because it doesn't say that we, we got together and we agreed on your proposal. You know, and this says that we agreed that.
Well, it doesn't, but you're right, it's, it's quicker than what, than what Paul said.
I understand what Paul is saying, whereas that actually does give them greater flexibility in some way, yeah, as they should have it.
But it, but it doesn't give.
Yeah, I wasn't saying.
The impression that we, that that overland route was really close. That, that's what maybe that language says. They were just about there, and this is preferable, but that one probably went over, okay? We don't know. It could have.
And here, it is not an alternative at this point. It is not an alternative.
Right.
Right, it is not proposed and, and to be an alternative. We said, no, it is not.
Well, but they can present it later on, which is what Paul's.
They can present whatever they want.
As an alternative, we're coming up with this.
They could, they could present bringing trucks of water in every day.
So, and again, I, that's, anyway, we have it to one. They can come back with any design layout or utility change.
But we're still highlighting it that there was.
But then they can still challenge us that we were wrong.
Yeah.
To force this 140.
Yeah.
But we don't want to fight about it yet.
Yeah.
Because that would just be a waste of money, talent.
Am I too defensive with the proposed alternative?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm going to take it out.
You're too, you're too defensive with the whole thing.
No, 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 I get, wait, I agree, I agree with Tom.
An alternative is fine.
So I, I think if, well, I'm going to just read it and make sure everyone likes the way it sounds.
And Tom, listen this time.
All right. The special permit is, and I'll, I'll give it to Mike and Grace, but the special permit is conditioned on the development connecting to the town's planned water and sewer infrastructure within Milford Street, period. The applicant's right to challenge that condition and to pursue a modification of this special permit if the town does not secure the 2023 Mass Works grant and/or does not otherwise make a commitment by November 30 to commence construction of that project in early 2024 is reserved, period. In that event, the applicant may pursue a special permit modification seeking approval of an alternative utility route, the details of which would be reviewed during that modification process, which would involve a new public hearing. The board's rights to approve or deny such a modification are also fully reserved.
That's a good last one. I think, and I agree with Paul, I think they'll be fine with that.
So this, this.
Today.
Satisfied.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it.
They also amended, yes.
Yes, okay.
That's enough on my eyes.
Okay.
So we're not approving, we're not signing one, obviously.
But you, you can, you can vote, if, if it's your process to vote to approve the decision document, you go into that. We've discussed all the revisions that are going to be made. You can rescind the, the motion to.
And what if, what if they're not agreed to buy? I mean, we, we can make the assumption you will.
I mean, it's yours, it's, it's board's document now to, to um finalize. I mean.
Okay.
It's, obviously you don't want to. Take any huge swings with the document because you've already discussed it with the applicant. You've already made your motion as far as the, uh, the application's concerned. You discussed a lot of those details, but I think it's fine. Obviously, you're making these modifications to the language that's still, is pursuant to the intent of the board's original motion to approve the application.
Can you give me that? What paragraph is that?
Paragraph twenty-three, I mean, second twenty-three, paragraph.
Twenty-three G.
Thank you, yeah. And Paul, do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I do.
So I move that we approve the decision document as an amendment.
I moved. Any discussion? Any discussion from?
It's not.
Okay, um. Paul, favorite Tom? Paul?
Hi.
Ken?
No.
Oh, oh, that's right. Me, Catherine. Oh, yes, I.
And you're not voting on the special permits. You don't need four votes. It's just, this is just. So three is fine.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if I can print to a. Upstairs in this locker now, but I can. Print it. Is anybody, is everybody around tomorrow or the next day to endorse the? Oh.
I vote we send. The page what we got and see if it cuts in.
Oh, it won't. We'll be good. And everything should, hold on, we make sure.
You mean, well, you, you can cut the page correctly, right?
That's what I'm looking to make sure that nothing else is going to be.
So I think I took, I think I took words out. So I think.
Yeah, I was to make sure it doesn't all shift, has it all shifted, which I don't think it has. So page.
Oh, that's right, because you can't, you can't.
And it wouldn't let me print one sided today too. Um, so it's double sided, but no, it, uh, the signature page intact, it won't, it, it did not move as a result of, so it's, those edits.
So it's not that, and like, could, so anybody could uh. Make sure that the changes are appropriate and we made.
Yeah, that's bad. Yeah, no, I got it. No, no, no.
See this, this.
Let it go, Tom, let it go.
Oh, no, I see exactly what you're saying.
The date is twelve, right?
Although I can vote, I'm glad to listen in on this stuff.
Yes.
That is the reason I wanted to learn. Well, it is only, you need three votes and. No, it's a big. I want to make sure. Do that.
Okay. And the final, I'm going to pick these out.
Yes, we also have a lot of. The changes, yeah.
Sometimes we're making sure.
They shouldn't do it, they shouldn't do it.
So that's why we're here. Not necessarily. Um, Margaret's gonna be gone for last three. It's probably.
Probably not gonna, she, she didn't say, she said she forgot. So I don't think it was a mutation.
We don't, we don't see. Yeah, we technically only need once.
So we try a hundred and twenty-first day.
Three is fine.
Twenty-two instead of twenty.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Other than that, because this would just, just maybe.
Okay, next on the agenda is planning board discussion or action items. Um, there are two proposed bylaws. Um, so one of them, which we started to talk discussion on last night is the large scale. Ground mounted solar within the average district.
Not last night, you mean last meeting.
Meeting, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, I'm still like. No.
I was wondering what meeting you went to.
No, I was just meeting with myself because I'm gonna get whatever I want. It's really good.
That's the argument.
So, um, well, I can argue well with myself, don't worry. Um, so. You know, we talked about this a little bit at our last meeting. Um, and when, uh, when, when do we need to have the public hearings?
Yeah, so um, thanks for mentioning that. We need to schedule public hearings on these items. Um, so we would need to do that for, we can't afford to get it in for the, the twenty-sixth. Um, because we would have had to advertise today and I wasn't able to confirm with the board about. The public hearing dates, but we should be good. Is it third or the tenth is our?
It's the tenth.
Probably would need to, um, all, we wouldn't, we won't be able to fit it in here.
Um, so yeah, we'll uh. Advertise um for the tenth for, for vote from my spots.
I mean, can we vote upstairs?
Sure, yeah.
I think.
Can we hang white gets up there?
Yeah.
Right.
Why?
Come here and do you want me to see if um community center is available?
Ooh.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look into that and I'll, if, if that's not available, I'll do here.
Can you do um, can you send it remotely now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's easier to do remote as community centers. They have this, the TV setup versus upstairs. I have to put this down.
Oh.
We're getting time down the chair about the, the violent changes tonight or we just?
Yeah, no, I, I thought we were gonna, I mean, that was, that's what's already going on. I just wanted to know when we had to decide on this beforehand. Um, so we talked about, you know, the um solar farm one and um. And again, I, I, I think we made our opinions or I, I mean, my opinion, you know, if they build it, if, if we, if we allow it, they will come. And I haven't changed my opinion of that.
You're against solar?
Hmm.
You're against solar?
Nope.
Are you? What, what are you against any part of this?
I am against um if. Being us explicitly saying that um you can, you can build them in that. I, I think that, um, you know, I don't like the idea of prohibiting them. Um, if they, I mean, I would love to do spot zoning. So I, I just don't know if this is another vehicle. I think we had looked at three different options. And I would allow, um. You know, solar farms in certain areas, like I think they're places where they actually work. But um I would prefer not to vote against them totally. But I just, you know, we're opening ninety percent of the land area out to enough to solve it. And I, that just bothers me.
When we talk about spot zoning, I think we were, I think we came down maybe unanimously against, you know, this, this started with one parcel that we're talking about. We did talk about rezoning that to allow.
Yes.
Solar to go there by, by making it commercial industrial. I think we all came down on that's dangerous too, right? Because once you make it CI, they could pull the solar, they could never put the solar panels in, they could pull them out after a year and it's still CI. So I, I don't think we're moving in that direction.
Right.
So it really is whether. We are saying. With, you know, do we, right now, we only allow it in one zone, commercial industrial. Do we allow it elsewhere? Um, and I think, yeah, I don't know, depending, school. School use would. With that, we don't even allow it municipal, do we?
No.
So Cluffs, no, no, uh, what's the middle school? Uh, my kids are out of there, so. Misco, they put the solar in the, yeah, the, uh, the parking lot. We wouldn't allow that here at the high school, right?
Right.
Solar as a secondary is love where. On everybody's house, right? Anybody could put it on their house.
Yeah.
On the lawn.
On the lawn is a question mark. According to the town council, uh, it is allowed, but we don't explicitly allow for it in.
It's ugly. If you have house space in some way, but you can put the panel this way on the lawn, you can, you can do it, I thought.
Yeah, there are a number of people have.
Yeah, there are people that already have it, but uh, it's one of those things.
There's a special permit to be able to.
No, we don't, we don't even. We don't even discuss it in the bylaw. That's.
Yes.
So that means that uh, like Kelly's was one that came in, right? So Kelly's would not be able to put up solar on their front.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, there are certain parcels that I think are good for it. It's just unfortunate that ninety percent of our land. It is, I wish we could create a whole different zone.
But we can't say you can do this here, but you can't, and you can do that.
I know, I, I understand that, I understand.
That's something.
You have.
You can do that by making it approvalable by special permit.
And which I was, I was coming around to the, I mean, I wanted, if it's gonna be at all, if we're losing it, I think it's special permit and I think I wouldn't want. Setbacks and, and we had talked about. You know, sometimes it's not just the setback, like in feet, it's really the visual impact, right?
She meant a good word in the last one.
The controls, the controls that were added into the language after this discussion last time. Um, Grace was looking into all the most recently approved bylaws through AG's office for solar updates. For towns, um. Uh, uh, one of them was. That a portion of the, oh, no, I'm sorry. Was this, was that one you found? The portion of the parcel used for a large scale solar. Um, must have been previously cleared from trees for a period of at least five years prior to the submission of the project. Well, that, that is something that passed the AG's office as far as. By law.
So is that a no, no big scale cutting?
Uh, so you can all lose forest, but you will be in lose farm.
It um.
Unless you put it on roof. Unless you have high ones, you, you can plant anything underneath the dual use. What about dual use? Club farm man and like, again, the applicants, they wanted to put them underneath the tall ones and they wanted to put their crops there.
There's nothing that would prohibit that, I don't see.
But that's not, it's an AR, but this, well, this would allow them to uh duly use their property. Would, would the assessment value go up on that? What would you? Would you make money uh from your agricultural land if you put a?
That's a good question. I don't know what, um, how uh they, uh, these are assessed currently.
But on the flip side, does this mean that if we put this through? Um, that the, we, the Steffens Farm can turn into a solar.
Who's?
Steffens Farm. Can turn into a solar farm.
Yeah.
It's got three face, power on Beganic Street.
Is that where it is?
Yes.
Steffens Farmers?
Yeah.
Uh, does mechanic street have three face?
I don't think it has three face.
I don't think it does.
I believe, I told that the closest to the golf course was, was Beganic.
But that's what you're saying, you're just saying that you can go to Steffens Farm, all the backlands there and put a solar farm.
It's all.
There is some at the very back of it.
Well.
Rafton.
In Rafton, right.
They cleared a figure in.
Well, they cleared it, yeah. But you can also put it where the.
On the field. I believe they're all on the King Street, but I, I.
I'm looking now because I honestly can't remember.
That's all town, bro.
Yes, it's not held by, I mean, but that's, this is basically what you're saying, though. It's like. You know, that area is um zone agricultural extension. So you're saying that you can put solar panels there where the community gardens are. Um, you're saying.
If the town.
It's not.
If this, well. It has to be special permit. No, I mean, the town says it wants to put solar panels.
It's against one forty?
You can put it.
It's one forty and then.
It's a special permit.
This. This is mechan.
Two face.
Somebody, I mean, you know, there is a.
Which about?
People want solar and so the town may say this is a good use for, you know, affordable housing. I mean, there are tons of things that people could say would use for that land. I'm just using that as. You know, just as a example of what, of where these things could be developed. I mean, you know, Tommy or golf course. Um, which maybe, you know, I mean, that, that would be.
It'd be a beautiful spot.
It'd be a beautiful spot.
The other, the other.
Base yourself with a little ridge to be put open.
And you wouldn't see it.
Oh, that's the thing. That's actually bad because you wouldn't see it around this place. It's like what we're talking about. What is it? A hundred foot setbacks or thirty foot, I guess, thirty.
I think we did a hundred, no, uh, for, for the AR districts going forward, there was new language added. That said a hundred feet from all sides.
Yeah, and that actually isn't much.
And that's key, and that was in keeping with what the controls are currently for this use. Um, there's language in the um dimensional intensity requirements currently that say if it abuts residential um area or zone, I forget.
Yeah.
Uh, that it had, that it um setbacks increases to a hundred feet. So we said. Let's keep that constant in the residential area. If, if that's, if that was the initial step back that was agreed upon to protect residential, it doesn't make sense to just transpose that onto this new area for residential.
So from a planning board perspective, this proposed, does it help the town and how does it help the town or hurt the town? Does it help the town with revenue?
I don't think it helps the town.
Does it increase revenue? Does it increase the, the value of our agricultural land, which is eighty percent of our town? Does it, does it allow us to make more money off of the land or does it hurt the town because it's ugly?
I have more information from the assessor.
Yeah, I would be more gracious if, I don't know.
Taxes.
You know, I mean, residential land generates a bolt-on factor.
Well, if we, if we look at the impacts of this, the impacts of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
We just saw one neighborhood not liking it all right upon, or was they, they took it to court, didn't they?
Yeah, I, and. They dropped it. They appealed.
Where is this one?
Uh, North Street. Before you get to the big subdivision, that whole hill that went up would have been clear cut. Solar panel.
Yeah, not, this, I don't know, if you can't get anything, you know, the hill is perfect.
Is it, is it solar farm?
They proposed it. It was a special permit in a site plan. We approved one and denied the other.
Well, is that a commercial industrial? I mean, was that a?
General business, and no, was agriculture residential and a big.
Uh, it was, it was like a law school exam question because they had. They had filed for zoning relief. And gotten that because not a single neighbor showed up at the zoning hearing and after the hearing, the neighbors found out about it and said, we never got notice. And they, what happened was they got the wrong butters list from the.
Oh, that was that one, okay. And that was when there was.
So the applicant said, hey, we did everything we were supposed to do. We got this, we got zoning relief. I forget what the split was. I think it was Ray and Tom said, we, Margaret and I said. You got zoning relief, we're not gonna look at it as a zone anymore. You know, it's not a zoning issue.
Right.
So what I'm gonna say, it shouldn't be there because it's AR. Tom and Ray said, you know what? You, you had to come to us for a site plan and a special permit. We get to decide whether this is appropriate for the neighborhood if we say it's not appropriate.
Detrimental, doesn't it?
So it's a two-two split. They didn't get it. They. Field guy, actually George Karitsky, no one just came up today.
But if you, if you're on your own house, you can put up any solar that you want for your own individual use. That's why I know. Where does the money and where does electricity go? We have a solar farm. Person who owns the land makes the money of the.
Listen, this thing really goes back to the grid. Um, there are, it's, it's becoming more common for solar farms to try and harness that energy on site. Uh, but that's, that hasn't become typical yet.
So it doesn't go up.
Well, that's the question. Are we making any money off of this source? It's just a nice vote.
I think it's just a nice.
I don't think you're making enough money off. I can confirm with the assessor what things are being.
Through taxation, through a set value, through uh, what, what, with the platform, we get three percent of this, three percent of that. Is there anything we get away free electricity from these things?
You don't, certainly don't get that for.
I know, I know how um does all of their municipal. What they with their, uh, with their turbines, I think.
I mean, hold. They, you know, there are towns that happen in some whole life companies. Hold them is the case and they do the same thing. They can harness their own. Put this there.
That's the biggest benefit. Sorry, I got through the chair. That, that's the biggest benefit is, is if the town were to decide to engage in an activity like this, whereas the town is, is putting. Now Worcester has it all on the, the dump, the old dump right off of one forty-six and they, they do pretty well with that. Um, that whole uh powers there, um, supply off of a few turbines. Um, you can, you can, you can um. Go into a process where you lease out, do like a land lease of maybe town land and you go, yeah, you partner with a solar developer to. Outfit it with panels. They pay you a lease um to, to operate land plus. Uh, you know, a portion of, of what they're generating and what it costs for them to do or what they make on generating. So that, that, those sort of setups um exist as well. By expanding this use. In town, you, you definitely open that up for the possibility, but this zoning change doesn't. Automatically generate revenue anyways.
So what, what are we trying to get to tonight? Because I think Michael brought this issue to us for two reasons. One was one person wanted to put up solar in one spot.
And supposed to child, the market should be.
Yeah, and we talked, and we, so we talked about that. And then Michael also raised an issue that there might be some. Feeling out, there might be a court out there that someday could say opt it as too limiting and therefore, you know, an application that we denied. Gets constructively approved.
Right.
Right? So those are the two reasons. Um, I'm not sure I agree with, with both of them. I'm not sure I know that more solar is better. Um. Are we reading this before the, yeah, it doesn't. This room's split um as to what we want to do, what we want to recommend to the town, but do we want to get something? For a public hearing to try and gauge what a wider group wants to do. We don't have to get this in.
I was gonna say, we have to.
Wait, you can vote the, this, this is a draft um. Wait, you could vault the, this, this is a draft, um, placeholder, uh, for an article, so.
But if we're going to do it, we have to post, we have to, we have to post with it, for the.
Yeah.
Special for the year, public hearing.
But I, but we got good questions. Isn't it good? Isn't it a good thing?
I don't know. It depends.
Uh, yeah.
And, you know, I, I, one of the.
Predatory.
I, I was listening to a right leaning, leaning radio show on the way here and, you know, they're saying, well, what happens with these things? You know, their, their expected life of a panel is somewhere between twenty and thirty years. If it's thirty, then you're going to have like forty billion tons of panels that go offline every year if we build this out. And nobody really knows what to do with this stuff.
Just to let you know.
Same with, same with Tesla batteries, right? Nobody knows exactly what to do with them. So, you know, you, you hurt the land to help it later by, you know, stripping its chemicals, which are, you know, they, these, uh, the elements that they go into it. So I don't know. I don't know where I, where I stand on it, but, you know, maybe we, do we put something out for a public hearing, knowing that this committee might decide that this, what do we, um, board decides to pull the article.
Yeah.
Cause your, your opinion might win the day that we don't want to open it up at all. You, you and Margaret might be on the same side, saying, solar for a while, that'd be fun, seeing you together. And I'm kind of.
It's almost worth like, you know, bring this to a public hearing to have them see Kumbaya.
Um, I don't know. So we, I, I just don't know where we want to go because I mean, we can talk about this every meeting term a while, and we're not going to have unanimity on this.
I would like to request, um, oh, first of all, I did talk to Mike today, um, regarding decommissioning. And apparently that's written into what we're putting forward.
Right, that's what we need to tell town. So we're making fun of a lot for decommission.
So it isn't that we're gonna, you know, because that's one of my huge things. I think this technology, I think the comparison on these days is going to be like the Blackstone Canal is going to be up for ten years and then it's going to be, the railroads are going to take over because the technology on this stuff is advancing so much so quickly. Um, but, um, you know, I think that there was a legitimate question, what is the benefit to the town? And I think that that's worth looking into. I think to your point, that, you know, looking at having a public hearing on this, um, you know, whether or not we decide, well, if we decide, um, is, is at least useful because we get to hear what people are saying too. So I, I don't think doing that. Um, I just would like to keep the public hearing fact-based and not have a based on, you know, um, this sort of unproven rhetoric, um, but I don't think there's any way we can keep that.
That's it. That, that unproven rhetoric is what forms people's opinions too. And we're doing this for, you know, we're representative, right? So.
I just hate things being, I like things to be fact-based, so.
Nothing can be done unless it's first imagined.
Yes, but then you have to have your facts before you imagine it and develop here.
So free electricity is a good start.
It's not free. You're still paying the actual grid for a while.
It isn't free and what's the benefit to the town and, and torn some taxpayers and impacts? I, I am undecided.
And right now it's not.
I mean, the, 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 the matter of what's the benefits in the town, it's, it's unfortunate because it's the state through MGL forty A section three doesn't contemplate the benefits of the town. It, 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 it say, it, it doesn't state that the benefit, or doesn't state the benefits of the state. I mean, the intent of it is by exempting it, maybe not completely, but exempting it from certain provisions, certain, uh, overregulation to use the, the state's point of view of it. Um, is, uh, you know, that they're looking to protect the use to, to expand the use throughout the state because the state thinks it is a benefits of state.
It's sort of forty B for solar.
So it's like multifamily zoning.
Yeah. So Tommy, it's, it's another thing. It's forty B. It's like, if you don't do it, you can do it. And it's just, um.
Legal extortion.
It's legal, yeah. And that's, you know.
It's just policy, yeah.
Yeah.
For people who take private jets to climate change.
And then a little.
Yes.
Uparmure, of course. So.
No, I, yeah. So I, maybe I'm actually at problems with it in respect to, instead of like having zoning decisions he's jammed down.
But I'm not sure if we're the champions of this, just given how much debate we have. Sure. But I don't know if we are a sounding board for the town to just figure it out. Cause I don't think, you know, right, I know what, they're ugly. I don't want them all over.
Yeah.
Where I can see them. I mean, when I'm driving on the highway and they're tucked down to the side, you know, with the, that Caruth sign, you know, there's your, oh, yeah, four ninety-five by two ninety, that's fine. But when you, when you see a, you know, what used to be a farm with all these solar panels, it's crappy.
We gotta champion the question. Maybe not the.
Right, the forum. We, we can, we can provide the forum.
Yeah, we can provide the forum. We can make the decision after the forum. Whether, we will have time, right, to have a meeting to decide whether or not we recommend to go forward.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, Grace also. The chair, uh, Grace, Grace also, um, looked at to, um, Paul's question of like minimum acreage. And so there was a, um, subsection C that addressed, uh, minimum lot size of, of three acres. Um, has to be dedicated to the use within the AR district. So it's not just some.
I didn't like the three acres. I thought that was like a house lot, every spare house lot, you can't put a house on, it'll be a solar farm.
Yeah. That, that line is going to be.
Well, that would be a tough place for it because no one can see.
Plus it gets right behind the way you shoot and paint.
As long as you meet your setbacks, it doesn't matter if it's a square foot or, or, or whatever. As long as you meet your setbacks, they put it in the middle. Doesn't have to be three acres or five acres, as long as you're.
Well, no, but we could have a minimum size and I think the higher you make the minimum size, Yeah. the more expensive they are to build and the less like folks coming out to build them, or they build them.
We have a, we already have a minimum size in our book now, right? We're just expanding where these things are going. What's the minimum size now?
It starts at an acre. So minimum, minimum size of an acre's worth of panels um, can be approved as of right through site plan only. And then after, after that, um, two acres is special permit.
So nothing in here is going to, should be changing that?
No, that remains intact for the CNI district.
But we can do our own acreage for AR.
Correct.
Right. But I was thinking it was going to be, you know, seventy-one and a half acres or whatever the sand pit.
I would, I would, I would.
We can still change it. We're not, we're not locked into this.
Ten or something because I think again, one of the twenty, I thought we had twenty is the minimum. Because then you're not dealing with, you know, every single small lot being turned over.
But then you're, but you are like, like, pre, making it more likely that the basis to open space is going to.
Well, I, I mean, but that's why.
Twenty acre area, yeah.
Flat.
Right.
But the, but the big companies, that's what they're going to do. Is they're going to want massive space. I have a question. If you put in, is there any way we can find out how much um, electricity is actually generated by, let's say, a, a solar, like a solar farmer, five acre, ten acre?
Okay.
Can we get some of those? Because I don't think.
We didn't follow them. They really, it's like a megawatt per.
I don't think they're very much. I think it's like a.
Depends on the panel.
You know, it, it, it's sort of like get a hybrid car and save the planet. You know, and a hybrid car is not, so what do you want? You know, do we want to sacrifice our open space to get a drip of solar? When there are, you know, options coming down the, like, I mean, we put, the, um, administration said that once, it, she said this about a couple of months ago, is once it gets those turbines up, it's going to meet the wind farms up. Okay. It's going to meet seventy percent of our demands, our electricity demands. And then they're talking about stuff coming down the pipeline from Canada because they got to go ahead and judge on the length. So I mean.
These are the same people that said that the big date would be.
I know, I, I, yeah.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
But I mean, so, but the thing is, what, what we, turning up to into a massive, so, you know, with, I mean, you know, um, solar farm. Is it going to do anything?
Well, as a.
And being dramatic, because that's not what we're talking about, but it's not going to do anything to meet the demand for electricity in the state.
And, and the resident libertarian, I don't like putting restrictions on people if they have, they want to, they have ten acres.
Oh, no, you're not, you're not, because you're the one who looks at community impact on community all the time. You're the first voice saying, what's the impact on the community? That's what we're here for, to protect the, the, the community, to protect the residents. Then if it looks ugly, if it's going to change the water, then that's what we have to respect. And I respect that, Tom. But you can't have it both ways.
I don't think we should limit, uh, beyond reason, people's right to resell it.
And people think it's ugly, then.
A lot of things real quick.
People, well, we've had cases come before us where it, where people didn't like something going in that had been ruined.
You go.
And you, and you, and you and I both.
You propose a bylaw that says you don't, let's see how many people vote.
No, I mean, but it's like, don't, I'm just saying, I'm just going to, I'm applying to be a little hilarious.
I think we only have this room until eight forty-five.
Oh, good, okay. Tommy, you, I'll meet you outside. I had a claw, I slap you with it. Okay. So we have one more bylaw.
So are we doing, uh, are we going to hold?
I was always the public forum.
Yes.
That was my understanding. So I was going to go ahead and advocate for the public hearing. But the understanding, obviously, that language, placeholder language, it can change as a result of.
Good.
And we can talk about more at the next meeting.
Like, if there's any sort of support from the board, I expect it will change.
So the other, and there was another item, so.
The other one was changing, we already talked about this last time, the UCBD, um, district, uh, by right uses. There was, for some reason, we have people who like want to run a yoga studio, have to get a special permit through this board in order to do that. So we'll change that.
Yeah, I, I, I read that and I'm just, I have no problem with that.
No, makes sense.
You need to.
Good. Yeah, fitness club is nowhere else.
Well, we can have a gym and we can have a fitness club.
Yes. Supposedly the guy that came in with the dog grooming, right? Well, it's grooming, it's beauty. You're okay.
Okay.
And they have, you're watching.
And that's something, yeah.
He's still going, right?
So I.
So he's going.
But before we adjourn, I have one question. Is there any way you accommodate, um, requests to put in solar farms, um, in the interim?
You mean?
Well.
If it's not zoned, if you wanted to put it in the, in an AR district today.
If it's not, okay. Because, you know, again, as, as you said, some do make sense.
Yeah, go get.
There is a variance. There is an argument that that would be a use variance that the CBA could, could.
Okay.
Potentially, but they may ask for a site plan or you.
And we can give that, can we? Even if it's not.
They gotta, our thing is we can't bypass zoning. We have to approve by, by, by zoning.
Right, so zoning gives the use.
They gave us, that's their voting by the zoning, but the P S, so yes, we would have to address it.
So that's, that, that's an option for them.
That makes sense. Do you mind?
Yeah, oh yeah, that makes sense. I just, I'm unsure of the, uh, use variance as an actual option.
Can you check on it?
Yeah.
Can you get back to us?
Well, I mean, what, what I think Mike is saying is they're illegal, but they happen all the time.
Well, I, I also think that your bylaw needs to explicitly allow for it, um, and it doesn't. So, and, and then, that, then my, more than the question is, are they, even if your bylaw explicitly allows for it.
So can we go back in time for one second on the Warren article? We just discussed it very briefly on the, um, the personal services bylaw. Were we, don't we just supporting that bylaw, correct? That bylaw?
I assume so.
We sponsoring it, Wes?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on it or can we just schedule the public hearing?
No, we'll schedule the public hearing. You'll vote on it then.
We have to vote on solar, like right after the public hearing?
Um, you'll have another meeting
Yeah.
to discuss.
Okay.
Um, because the town meeting is the seventh, I think.
Okay.
And we're required to hold a public meeting, but we're not even required to give a vote.
Okay, good.
We can say, made no determination, you made a vote, we voted up or down, uh, decided not to recommend, decided to make no recommendation.
So Madam Chair would prefer, her preference would be not to take a vote, not to defer to us. Okay. Well.
Good job, Wes.
Still want to meet me outside. We actually can do the tools of sunup because the way my walking schedule is now, I always run it to every morning, put it during my walk, he's taking his vest or whatever it is, I'll go to the golf, like the motor.
Well, again, I know we're getting ready to go, but, um, and we don't have to go over it, we're, we're ready to leave, but the, the RFQ for the MBTA communities, um, I was just wanting to give the points blessing to proceed with that. This is, is all.
I read it. I've been following it and it's, it's good. It's just an RFP to, that was the grant that, it's grant funded, it's not funded through us to, um, you know, work with a team to.
And they have this go services and the. That's going to be coming through the boards. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, what I liked about the housing production plan that they came up with was they didn't say, here are the seven things we're going to do. It, it was, here are seven things you can consider. You could do this or that, you could do this or that, and that seemed to be good. I assume that's going to be part of what they're going to tell us about, like, these are some of the ways you could comply with the MBTA communities.
If some issues.
I was, I was expecting them as a result of that to work with this board to identify something.
Ten, uh, some affordable housing.
And that would also be.
Yeah.
Really important.
That's it.
That's really the thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because of ten percent, because.
Because if we're going to meet our affordable goals, you're getting a subject.
Because that's going to work. Good.
Cool. Yeah.
We'll never.
Yes, we will. Do you remember Jim Gallagher? Who was a slot running up there?
Yes.
Yeah, his son is on our portable housing trust. Good guy. Just retired his tons of time.
Jim Gallagher, the tall Gallagher's?
No, no, Tim was on, she's. So anyways, uh, motion to adjourn?
You can just adjourn and do the chairman.
Oh, do, um, blessing on the RFQ.
I did get a general sense. I don't need a vote.
Yes, okay, I know.
It seems like everybody's giving a head.
Yes.
If you're not giving a head, let me know.
Okay.
We don't think we're trusted by now.
Tommy, you made it, the motion to adjourn. Paul, you seconded it?